Evening, everyone. I want to call this Board of Selects meeting Monday, September 12, 2022. We'll start with the Pledge of Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indiv. liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of agenda. Do we have any additions? Under business, I'd like to add the hazardous waste day, which we have something from Keith on it, so we'll talk about Heather's waste day. So we have a motion by Jason to approve as amended, seconded by Phil. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is a public forum. This is where the board will take comments from the public on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone from the general public that would like to speak? Bring something up. I do have something. I got a letter that I'd like to read. This is to the town of Arundel Select Board about the website policy. Dear Select Board, first and foremost, I would like to thank John Bell for all the work he puts into the site and what he does for the town. I hope he knows what he does is greatly appreciated. Please forgive me for giving my input after the discussions and you voted to approve. My concerns regarding the business section of the website and how Arundel businesses are qualified to be on the site. I am a member of the Chamber of Commerce and was on the Board of Directors for six years representing the town of Arundel. The Chamber is a fabulous organization with lots of benefits for our local business owners, but the truth is, a great deal of local businesses do not belong to the Chamber, and I would say that that precedence is even greater in Arundel. It is just difficult to reach everyone, and if Arundel does not have a representative on the board, it is even harder. Currently, we have Joan Hull for the Arundel Conservation Trust and Bridget Lee from Bangaloo representing Arundel, but what they need is ambassadors to talk with local businesses about joining. We also have many businesses that do not believe that the Chamber is geared towards them and therefore would not see a benefit from it. There is misconception that the Chamber caters to tourism, not so, but the perception is hard to break. Also, because you must pay to be a member of the Chamber, a lot of businesses do not want to pay the annual, especially if they have trouble seeing the return on their investment. My point is, the Chamber is a great place to start. I just do not think we should limit ourselves to it. I know when John and I were on the Arundel Economic Development Committee, we tried to get a business list for the Arundel Town businesses, but we could not seem to entice people to register their businesses. Maybe it's a good time to bring the registry back up, let businesses know that the Chamber is the only form of business list that we have, and if they want to be listed on a website along with the Chamber businesses, they will need to register their business. We could probably set something up to do it online. I just know that if we limit to just Chamber businesses, we will be missing many legitimate businesses in Arundel. It probably will not sit well with businesses that were once members of the Chamber but decided not to renew because they did not see the benefits. Thank you for listening, Linda Zook. So maybe it's something we discuss maybe in the next meeting. Okay. With that said, our next item is approval of the minutes of August 22, 2022.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Adama. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Ananamous. No committee and board reports. We'll move on to the manager's report. First item is status of office employees.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you know, we're still down two employees in the general office area. We're missing a town clerk as well as deputy town clerk, tax collector. At this today, Marx, I received probably in essence now 60 resumes to review for possible consideration. I've already interviewed two. I've had a couple of people that have bowed out that I thought would have been good candidates, but because of other areas of expertise or areas of concern, they have decided not to continue in the offering. So I have 60. I'm fanning through those now, and at some point this week, we'll probably have a series of more interviews and hopeful that we'll select or get one of them that fits all our needs. Most of the applicants that we have right now do not have municipal experience, not saying that that's a requirement, but some of them do have vast business experience that would relate nicely to what we do here in Arundel. So I'm confident that we're going to be able to find somebody within the list that we have in order to assist us.
Okay. All right. Next is the Arundel Charter amendments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, last week you had a meeting. We reviewed charter changes that obviously did not get approved at the annual town meeting, so our efforts are now to bring those forward at the November election. Part of that, and I'll need some action from you this evening, is that I've prepared a public hearing notice that needs to be posted, suggesting that the public hearing be held Monday, September 26, at your business meeting that evening. And I've generally put down the sections of the charter that we're going to be proposing to change. Again, nothing has changed. I think at your meeting, it was at last Wednesday, we cleaned up some issues. We saw that one particular item was left off the voting, so we've added that. I believe everything else will be all set. So I would seek a vote, a motion and a vote to set the public hearing for September 26 at 7:00.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Adama, seconded by Tom. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Next item is development of performance assurance agreement between the MDOT, the cottages, and the town.
Yeah, just to keep you in the loop, as you may or may not know, when the cottages were approved on the Route 1 corridor, part of the approval process was that MDOT required some turning lanes to access the cottage area. Those turning lanes are now being required by MDOT to be installed within a year's time, and part of that process is to establish an escrow account in which funding would be set aside to do that work. In the event it does not get done, the town is responsible to withdraw money from that escrow to ensure that that Route 1 corridor gets done. Initially, I was under the impression that MDOT and the cottages could do that singularly, but I've been told that we have to have a presence there. So we hired Sandy Gay to assist us in development of the agreement. The agreement now is being pushed back and forth between MDOT officials, the cottages' legal representation, and ours to ensure that the document is basically set up so things get done, money is set aside, and that the towns have no financial obligation to this, including whatever legal fees and services that are provided on our behalf to protect our interests. So still ongoing. As soon as I have the document, I'll certainly share it with you folks so you can take a look at it.
Why does a town have to be part of this?
I believe it's because of the land use approvals that were granted by the planning board. It's a town project, and as a result of that, there's impact on a road that's not really maintained or part of the towns. So impact on the state road requires their involvement, but I guess financially, they don't get involved in that. That becomes a responsibility because it's our project, so to speak, in our town that we have sort of skin in the game.
Next item is the full-time fire department staff. We've hired a few people, I see.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, last week, Ryan Babcock and Stephen Speckton completed their in-house training and have begun their shifts with the fire service. So that provides us three full-time firemen now that are working alternate shifts. They work 24 on, 24 off, 24 on, four days off. So they're rotation there that will have somebody on staff at the building all the time. So we welcome them. We had a brief ceremony last week, welcomed them here, and their wives, significant others, pinned them, so they were all set to go. So we welcome them aboard, and hopefully things will work out for us.
Nice. All right. Moving on to business. First item is renewal of liquor license for Vinegar Hill Music Theater.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe representatives from Vinegar Hill are here this evening to discuss with you the license renewal. Just to give you a brief information that I was provided today, our town attorney, Leah Rach, has been in contact with the attorney from Vinegar Hill and discussed various parameters for seeking some of the conditions that we would like to see completed down at Vinegar Hill, particularly on some of the zoning issues that we have. And there's a variety of things that I know that the folks at Vinegar Hill would like to do, and we would like to see them do them, but there are certain process and procedure that we have to go through. And I think, according to Leah, and I think it's Attorney Mazur, am I correct? I think they've had some discussion that it may be prudent for all parties to be in the same room to discuss some of these issues and to try to resolve these in a amicable manner. But right now, we have a renewal application before you. I've provided you some information relative to it, some of the letters that have been circulated, reference to issues that were outstanding there. I'm sure that they are here and they can express some of their concerns and some of the things that may be moving forward with themselves.
Are they in compliance, or are they still out of compliance?
We believe they're still out of compliance for land use, particularly with the stage outside. It's not... It hasn't received any revivals at all at this particular juncture. I may add that, you know, last year during COVID, and we did this to a variety of businesses within the community, that we sort of allowed some activity that normally would not occur to happen simply because we wanted to see these businesses continue to function and thrive in our community. And if you recall, there were a lot of communities that did the same thing. I know the city of Portland did it, and a lot of communities, I'm sure Bitterford and Saco did those as well, as well as our neighbors, in that we allowed things that normally wouldn't go without further planning board approval to happen simply because we didn't want to see them close their doors. There might have been a miscommunications between all parties that they thought that that may have been something that allowed them to continue those activities without planning board review. I'm hoping that we're going to get to a point where that's clearly understood, that those need to have those reviews by the planning board before they are instituted.
Comments from the board?
Yes, yeah, I, yeah.
So are you saying that if that stage wasn't there, that's part of the noncompliance, or is that all of the noncompliance?
Well, I think there are, and I'm sure that Attorney Mazur can maybe fill in some of this, but I think there's been some issues with the septic system that are being addressed, I hope, and I believe. There are issues referenced to food being served. I don't believe there is a license that's outstanding for that particular event at this point, and I think it's primarily based on the septic system. And so there are other concerns that we have and have been expressed. I believe that the letter of the 19th of July that I put in your packet for the notice of violation that was sent sort of outlined some of the concerns that we have, as well as the, I believe it's the 29th, 28th letter that indicated that the theater was going to comply with their permit, which provides them, I believe, 260-seat theater inside the building. And that's basically all I know at this point, but the stage outside has not been permitted and places the property right now in violation.
If you folks would like to speak, please turn the mic on and identify yourself. You got to hold it for a second.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Brandon Mazur. I'm an attorney at Perkins Thompson. We have offices in both Kennybunk and Portland here, representing Vinegar Hill. I think the town manager did summarize a lot of the ongoing conversations. A couple of updates for you this evening. There was one mention of some issues with the Secretary of State's office. We are now in good standing. There was an annual report that needed to be filed, so that has been taken care of and is an update. The outdoor stage, everything has been moved indoors at this point, and they are operating as their 200. I think it's been updated with the fire to 280-seat capacity, but it's a 250-seat capacity theater. I've been discussing extensively with Attorney Rach, sort of the process and procedure, because there's a lot of moving parts here, and we are hopefully going to have everybody in the same room, because I think there's just been a lot of miscommunications on what's needed here for the septic versus what's needed for site plan versus what's needed for the food. So the issue before you this evening is the liquor license renewal, which is at the discretion of this board. They still have a handful of events that will get them to the end of the season through the end of October. We have a draft of a site plan application in with Mr. Feldman, who's the hired town planner. We have the septic application in with Mr. Nagle, the CEO. My understanding, and this is part of the reason we all need to get in the same room, I've reviewed the septic application, going back to the file for the property. There's a lot of history with this property, but based on the flows on the DHHS flow chart, I believe the plan is, meets the needs for both an indoor theater and outdoor theater in an event space. None of those activities would be happening all at once. But again, without having the ability to speak with Mr. Nagle, I just got on board with this last week and have been communicating with Attorney Rach. We are just waiting for them to give the go-ahead and frankly, dig the hole in the ground and put the tanks in. As the town manager mentioned with COVID, we've, getting contractors, getting people have slowed some of this down. And then I believe Mr. Feldman requested permission at the end of last week to speak directly with the engineer on some of the site plan application issues and some of the things that additional information he needs before that can get in front of the planning board. I'm hoping that meeting can also take place here in the next few days. With that, I'm happy to answer any of the questions, but short answer is, they're only operating inside the barn. That outdoor stage is built to be a temporary structure. We're going through the site plan to hopefully make it not a temporary structure, get everything permitted. We have every intention of going through the process, and that's why I was brought on board, was to make sure that we can get the septic up to up to the code as needed, get the site plan and everything updated, as well as hopefully renew this liquor license, get us through the rest of the season. And frankly, we'd be happy to have a condition of approval on that renewal at the town level. I don't think the state will care one way or the other, but at the town level, to proceed with that site plan and septic approval. And I have copies of all those applications if they're helpful and happy to answer any additional questions.
From the board, have any questions?
Did you say that you had information that the Secretary of State had? I think the question was on the food and liquor license.
In the notes, in the agenda, it mentioned being, it was a vague reference, but I believe when you look at the Secretary of State's website, the state would have looked at this as well. You have to be in good standing with Secretary of State, and we are, we had to file an annual report and pay the fee. That was done, and I do have the copy from the Secretary of State's website showing that we're in good standing.
That must have happened today.
It did.
Okay, because I checked it this morning, and you still aren't in good standing.
Yeah, I am happy to share this with you if you need.
Can we do a conditional liquor license?
Here's my issue. This has been going on for months and months and months, and I'm not inclined to grant until all these processes have been done and taken care of. I mean, we've heard from way back, our intentions are intentions, and it's just one issue after another after another. And, you know, for me, I want to see them come in compliance before we issue them a license. They've known about all these issues for how long now? This has been going on and on, so that's kind of my concern.
Has there been a scheduled, you referenced, like everyone's saying, is that meeting scheduled?
It's, we're working on scheduling between my office and Attorney Rach's office. We just had that. She was out of office last week for the last, end of the week. I spoke to her this afternoon. We're hoping to have that meeting next week. Like, we're trying to coordinate six or eight schedules, but that is scheduled. It's also my understanding that just, we are under, we are in compliance for the indoor theater at this point, which is all that will be operating between now and the end of October or so.
Yeah.
So.
Other than the septic, that hasn't been signed off.
But the septic for the current approved use for the indoor theater, for 250-seat theater, was up by the Fire Marshal, 280. That septic, from my understanding, is meets the standards. If we didn't change, if we didn't do any changes, if we didn't do sort of events, and if we didn't do the outdoor theater, we could continue to operate, no problem. And that's all the intention is, from my understanding, between now and the end of October, other than, and I can have Sarah come up, I think a Pre-Root event that takes place with some groups in the Countybunk area in December. But beyond that, there's one more movie night, I believe, and...
That's outside, right?
No, everything's been moved in. Everything's been moved indoors.
My only problem is, I mean, I'm looking at an application for the renewal, and our CEO has signed, denying.
Correct.
I mean, if you think you can have this meeting put together for next week, with one more selectment meeting, the answer you guys, I mean, I just, I don't want to make it a habit of going against Jim Nagle denying an application, and then we all of a sudden supersede him and say, oh, no.
So.
I would feel more comfortable if you guys could have that meeting with everybody in place.
The current license.
Let's have a new application sent to Jim's desk, and he feels comfortable that you guys meet all his standards, and we can get this application back.
So we will have that meeting. We won't have planning board approval, or the septic might be. The other issue that we're running into. Say that again?
You just said the septic wasn't an issue.
Well, we've got the plans. I don't know if it's going to be in and signed off on.
The septic would be an issue if they want to expand what they're doing now. Right now, they would be in compliance with their indoor theater activity, which they've been doing for years. That was...
Do you have documentations of that, that the septic system will...
The septic system is fine with that. There were some things that were done years ago that made the septic system a little bit smaller than what would have been approved even back then, and now the standard has even gone higher. But until they do anything different than what they've been given approval for, the septic system meets those requirements for the theater and the activities that they do with the music theater.
And a couple of other things with timing. Our state license does expire, so another Board of Select meeting would likely cause that to go into an expiration. Additionally, we, I want to be efficient with this board's time. So we, I think it would be within the purview of this board to put a condition and withdraw our license if we are not in compliance by the time of our next season. We do have the application for both the septic. And unfortunately, I'd hope to speak directly with Mr. Nagle and Mr. Feldman. Attorney Rach, at the end of last week, asked that I not reach out to them directly without her being a part of that conversation, and unfortunately, she had major deadlines that basically had her out of office Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So the best I could do was send her the information that I had with the updated applications and then schedule the call for this afternoon.
Why did Jim Nagle think that as of August 23, if you were not using the outside stage, that you were still, you applicant has been and continues to operate beyond the 82897 approved uses? Why did he think that as of August? I know you weren't using the outside stage, because I go by there quite often.
Because the structure is still there.
Oh, the structure, all right.
The stage is still there.
Is that his reason for denying?
I believe it's one of the reasons, yeah.
Because otherwise, they're doing just what their original application said on 1997, the four-bedroom house and the 260-seat indoor theater.
And as a detail, somebody relevant to this board, the residential aspects will be removed, are contemplated to be removed from this site plan application, which also increases the flow capacity, but that's more of the septic and making sure that we have the right-sized capacity, but for what it's worth.
As I understand, their license will expire on September 18, which would be next week.
So we're going to, we were planning on drive, basically driving it up to the state this week to get us through the next 45 days or so until the season ends.
I understand, I'm against the law, but I still feel that I hate seeing an application here that's been denied by the photo, and then you're asking for, I just, it leaves a bad taste in my mouth, me personally. I would rather this be done correctly and be approved by Jim before we make any sort of move. And I'm looking at the application here, August 22, and it does approve. Joining garden area, Seashell 10 sites, walkway 1, leading 2, and parking lot being used for outdoor concerts.
I'm sorry, man, if you, please, if you need to.
Yeah, there is a cover letter with the liquor license that explains finalizing the updated site plan. It's the first page of that application. We recognize that this is not necessarily standard procedure. But we do have a longstanding business here. But we do have a longstanding business here that has
I agree.
And there will be some events that will have to be to be canceled between now and the end of October.
And we understand that, but there's also been a long going thing with with the town and the planner and trying to get things done. And it's like nothing is getting, like, you know, granted, we see some things are getting done now, but there's just been a lot of history here of things not getting done, right? And that's why we had to bring counsel.
Understood. And
You forced our hands.
And I've had very good conversations with Attorney Rachel. She's happy that I'm involved. I'm hoping that we can bring this to a swift solution at the planning board and the planning department level. Which technically, one of the, one of the standards in the liquor laws that at your discretion, you can approve or deny. And again, unfortunately, I have been brought in just as of last week to to work on this. I focus on municipal and liquor licensing. And I am quite confident we can get everything taken care of, but but not in time for September 18th.
That's something from Jim, the reason that he said deny is simply because of that outside stage?
I can talk to Jim, sure.
He would do that, if he would do that, then he could call the special. That's my issue is the fact that it says, again, like they said, Jim says deny, the only reason he says deny is because of that outside stage. I'd have that outside stage on tomorrow.
I don't want to go against the code enforcement officer. I think that's that's a bad precedent.
I can certainly, I can certainly talk to Jim tomorrow. And if we're going to, obviously, if if you take no action tonight, we're going to have to have another meeting in order to take action somewhere or the other before the 18th. So
And I'm open to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can make myself available for the special.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's incumbent on them to work with Jim and, you know, if they can, whatever his issue is, if we can come into some sort of agreement, then I'm good, but I don't want to go against Jim.
Okay.
I do see that.
So is it your intention at this point to table?
If you need a motion, I would make that a motion. At least table it until we can get verification from Jim if that is in fact why he denied the application.
Okay, we're definitely.
Simple, how soon could that state be getting that?
I would have to talk to our technical team to find out that we can get licensed for eight people to take the stage. The stage is not accessible, we pulled the stairs off of this, and you know, you pull the stairs off of it the day before, the day of the decision, the letter that the stairs pull off. And we moved all of our outdoor performances inside.
And and arguably, and arguably, we would be and I can talk to Jim as well, but in in some ways, this is an application after the fact in that to have to go through the hassle of tearing something down, even though it is it is removable to go through the site plan process to put it right back up seems like an inefficient way of handling this. Planning. It was, it was not. It was put up with permission last year. And there's always it was be under the COVID regulations. It was a temporary structure.
Extended, we extended that some flexibility to the music theater so they could have some outdoor activities to continue to operate because they were limited because of COVID to their indoor indoor activities. So we allowed that to happen.
So this would be arguably a permit, in some ways, a permit after the fact, although because of that, there have been some other issues that have been discovered, including the septic system that sort of had special permission from back in the 90s. So, you know, it's sort of been an onion that's uncovered certain layers, all of which we're we're working towards with engineers and others to get to get into compliance and to the satisfaction of the planner and to the code enforcement officer.
So if if the only issue that Jim has is with the stage, and as she explained, you know, the stairs have been taken off and if, you know, there are ways to make sure that they can't be used, I mean, and Jim is okay with that, I'm certainly on board with that.
Okay, so I'll just talk with him again tomorrow. I'm sure that Attorney Major will be in contact with Attorney Rachel. We'll have some phone going, some phone conversations going around. We can try to get this.
So are just as a matter of process, will you be trying to set a date certain for this week for the follow me, because if if not, we need, if it's denied, we need that in writing as well as part of the process.
Because there's an appeal process for you folks to to handle if in fact it's denied by the group.
Right.
And we haven't voted yet on on that motion. Did you make the motion? I remember a motion that was made to.
I made a motion to
For table, to table.
Until, until you can receive verification.
Why don't we set it, why don't we set a date for for their special emergency meeting?
Yep.
So we can get all parties back here. We have a date certain that we're going to do it.
Just a week from, a week from tonight?
Well, no, it has to be, it has to be done before the 18th, so it's going to be done this week.
Yeah.
So it's either the 14th, 15th, or 16th, I would say.
I'm open any night. I mean, if this is going to, this should be a pretty relatively quick meeting.
We'll only be focusing on that subject matter.
Yep, so. Any night for you folks, whatever you.
What's good for you, Jason, is Wednesday?
I work the next two nights, so I'm in town, tend to agree if it's known.
Okay, so you could be here, like.
How about you, Phil? Any night that is not? Yep.
Okay.
So let's pick, let's pick the 15th.
Thursday, the 15th.
Thursday, the 15th. That gives you a little bit of time to get with Jim.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Should I leave the mic on? Do you want me to turn it off?
No, you can turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is findings of fact and order of dangerous building, the 159 Proctor Road. No, the next one would be renewal of the graveyard.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry.
But we we have one before you for for Rendrick Trust. It's a renewal application. The CEO has reviewed it and has approved it. I would just need action and signatures by the board to approve this ongoing function that's been going on up there for many years. By Velma, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Okay, I'll send it on down. Thank you. What's that?
The automobile graveyard.
No, I did not place it in the packet. If you'd like to see the application, I have it here.
We all sat? Okay. The next item is the findings of fact and order of a dangerous building on 159 Proctor Road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you recall, two weeks ago, you had a public hearing. Provided the opportunity for folks that live around there wanted to express opinions as well as the owners to express opinions as to what's transpiring down there in terms of cleanup and issues related to the building. In doing that, Attorney Plant has provided you a findings of fact based on the information that was gathered that evening and provided this information to you for signing off. As you read this document, this would be recorded and would be it piece of information that it would be used moving forward for any further action by the town if necessary. You will see at the, at the end of it that the the owners of the property have until September 21st to abate the nuisance and the dangers associated with the structure. And it should be substantially cleaned, and such clean shall include remove all waste, trash, and debris that's been throughout the structure. On our behalf, we provided two 30 yard dumpsters, and as I understand now, one has been filled and moved. There's another one on site now. Hopefully, there's activity filling that one as well. And you've given them till the 21st to accomplish those goals. So at that point, it would be my hope that they'd be able to provide us some information relative to the inside of the building. And so we can decide one way or the other, which, what direction we're going in. All right, we'll have another meeting after that, right?
Yep.
This finding of facts has to be, if you agree with it, has to be signed, and so we can get notarized and sent to Attorney Plant, so it can be recorded as well as, I believe, notifications have to be sent to all the parties that have an interest in the property as well.
So looking for a motion to sign the findings of fact. Motion by Jason, seconded by Phil. Any other discussions on this?
Yes.
All the, the motions that I didn't hear. Yeah, so the motions that say pursuant to MSR.
The motions said that we are accepting the, adopting the findings of fact and accepting the provisions of law and accepting the decision or implementing the decision in order all contained.
Got that, Jason?
It was Tom who made the motion. All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the finding of facts. Help me out your phone, including the the legal description of the property itself. As well as in the decision in order.
Decision in order.
He also talked about I can move the trash, that it would be Jason talked about it being having the electrical.
Yeah, I just wanted more compliance inspections.
Yeah, and there's nothing in here about that. It just says it should be substantially cleaned.
I thought I read something in there.
Um, yeah, what did I read?
Does she block something wires and pipelines are exposed? Does not say anything in here about.
It does say conditions within the structure have been substantially remediated to the satisfaction of the board.
Right, right, yeah. Yep. Okay, we have a motion by Jason, seconded by Tom. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I need to sign the
Oh, I'm sorry. I gotta send it on down. I apologize. I'll put it at the top, but the whole document's here if you need to, but you should have a copy of it with you. Today is the 12th.
Okay, next item is a poll permit on LaGro Lane in Irving Road.
Yes, we have a permit that's been reviewed by Public Works, indicated that everything within the document, the poll permit is is okay. We'd be seeking your signatures of motion and second to sign this on behalf of the poll permit.
Is that for the development across the street from LaGro Lane?
Yes. Yeah, I have the poll permit here, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to look at it prior to.
You know, if that's going to be CMP or kind of unclaimed power.
CFE.
Because it's like right there where they stop.
Central main power, yeah, okay.
For them. Okay. Looking for a motion to approve that permit? Motion by Velma, seconded by Phil. Any other discussions? All those in favor? Carries.
Poll permit, yeah, it's on right down.
Yeah, yeah, it ends, it's just a little bit past LaGro Lane is where the split is. All right, the next item is the status for the sewer one, Route One Sewer District Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with the exception of Selectman Hayes, who was ill that evening, we all attended the trustees' meeting down at Kennybunk Sewer District to discuss the possible inclusion of our Route One corridor from the bridge, Kennybunk River Bridge to Campground Road to be included within the sewer district. Part of that whole process was to determine what infrastructure upgrades would need to be provided to the sewer district in order to take whatever flow would be coming from a rundle, and then also to estimate the cost associated with placing the infrastructure in the ground on Route One in order to accommodate that flow as it goes. Quite frankly, based on the quick analysis that I did, based on the information we had and how much it would cost to not only do their infrastructure upgrades, which are required, plus do putting our infrastructure in the ground, the the only funding mechanism that's presently available to us would be the the tax increment financing district and the money that we've been setting aside through the TIF in order to pay for any expansions. Doing the quick analysis based on the size of the project, which came in at close to $21 million, and the amount of money that would be coming from the TIF left us miserably short in terms of what it would cost for us to do it. And in fact, obviously, we'd have to get approval from the taxpayer to even even spend the TIF money. So based on all of that, it would be my recommendation that that we no longer exercise any due diligence to look at doing sewer expansion on Route One for the citizens of of Arundel based on the financing that we presently have available. I did reach out to to the district once again to understand what cost we would be looking at yearly for for a flow that we'd have to pay for right now, plus the debt service that we would have to pay as well, would be over $300,000 a year just to allow that flow to go into that district. And that would be on top of the $60,000 a year that Wright Pierce has given us for an estimate to maintain the sewer system once it's in the ground here and here in Arundel. So for all the numbers that we just don't have the money coming forward. So it would be my recommendation just to just to let this thing go and move on to other projects that may be there.
All bets from the board? Yeah. We all do.
Now, I did look at the TIF documents and we may want to have a discussion further as to what we can use that money for, but a bunch of stuff there, we can use it to to do a sidewalk on Route One if we so desired. We can use the money to put together a loan or or facade upgrades for businesses along the Route One Corridor. So in other words, if there was a business here that wanted to have some money to do an upgrade, we could loan them money or provide a grant to them based on whatever project they have moving forward. We could also use it for marketing purposes. We could hire a a company or a professional to market Arundel for business activities and things along those lines for for the for the town of Arundel. So there are other things that we could look at. I think in our last discussion, excuse me, we talked about whether or not we could expand that into something else. And I don't have that answer yet. So I'll have to find that answer out for you if if there are other options that we can provide, whether we need to have approval for those, either at the state level or at the local level. Not sure how that works right now. So as soon as I know, I'll let you know.
Thank you. Hey, looking for approval of accounts payable warrant? Motion by Velma, seconded by Jason. Any discussion?
Yeah, that's a big one.
All those in favor? Last item on the agenda is the hazardous waste day. Looks like we're going to do it on Saturday, October 29th.
Yes, last year, we did it on the 30th. So we'll do it on the 29th. It falls on that Saturday from nine to 12. We'll start promoting that and publicizing it so folks know what it can bring.
Yeah, we'll have John put this on the on the website.
Yes.
Yep, good. Okay. Any other business? Motion by Jason at 7:54 second. Seconded by Phil. All those in favor? No discussion. Motion carries.